It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions is declared by the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McK. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Community comment. Community comment is an opportunity for residents and other stakeholders to share issues or concerns not listed on the agenda with the city council. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. Individuals should not expect the city council to immediately respond to their comments or answer questions. The city manager, if appropriate, will follow up directly with the presenter following the meeting. The city council may also direct the city manager to place a topic on a future work session for discussion during the communications portion of the meeting. With that, is there anyone that has anything for community comments? Going once, going twice. Let's see, and it doesn't look like we have anybody on the Zoom, so we will move on to presentations and reports. Number 5.1 on our agenda tonight is employee service recognition. And we have two folks that we are presenting tonight. Do you want to take it off and start with Kathy?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So happy to be recognizing our coattail Kathy Elke on 15 years of service with the city. Kind of one of the unsung heroes, does a lot of the, kind of the work in the background, but in addition to all the technical stuff that Kathy provides, you're not going to find a more compassionate person on our team and frankly, in general, so really thankful to have her on the team and always here to support everyone in their time of need.
I'd also like to add to that, that Kathy is always, you know, whenever I run through, Kathy has always got great things to say and it's always fun to catch up with her. And I am not sure that you will find anybody else on our staff who loves to dress up in costume. So with that Kathy, let's give you your recognition and get a picture. And if I would have been thinking ahead, we would have done both recognitions and then the pictures.
That's okay.
Up next is the 10 year service award to Vicky Sanz.
Yeah, happy to recognize Vicky Sanz. And I think everyone probably in the entire city experienced all prepared and what a class act Vicky is. She runs the city's election program and so anyone who went through, even if they saw a long line or shortly ushered through and had their opportunity to vote. And so that's just really the tip of the iceberg, what Vicky does from cemeteries to licensing to permits to data requests to just lending a helping hand wherever it's needed throughout the city and on our team. So very thankful to be recognizing Vicky and her commitment to our team and servicing the community.
I think Vicky's attention to detail is second to none. There isn't any question that all the Ts will be crossed and all the Is will be dotted when Vicky's taken a look at something. So appreciate you and all your work and everything they've done for the city, Vicky. All right. Moving on to item 6.1, the truth in taxation public hearing. So before I hand it off to Lynn, we need to open the public hearing. And I need a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to open the public meeting.
A motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Right. Shutey.
Thank you. Right, I am just going to go through our truth in taxation slideshow. I am Lynn Shutey, the Finance Director for the City of Carver. Thank you for coming tonight. So the 2023 budget schedule, the budget starts long before anyone could even imagine. We start thinking about it right away in the new year. In July, we start assembling budget documents for the council to review. Department heads are already thinking about what they need for the next, for the next year. In August, the city council reviews our long-term financial plan as well as our capital plan. And in August and September, we're also refining the budget based on council comments and feedback. Always reworking, once we refine those numbers that are coming to us when we know them, such as insurance numbers and different things like that. September 19th, the council considers adopting the preliminary levy. This is the highest amount that the levy can be set. It can only go down from here for the final levy. And we need to submit this to Carver County so that they can send out notices to the taxpayers about what the most, the highest that the levy would be set at. In, during October, staff is still working hard on the budget, reviewing rates and charges and adjustments are being made. Again, as that information is coming to us, we're keeping council apprised of those numbers and making presentations at work sessions. And then December 5th, this is where we are today. We are having the truth in taxation public hearing. This is required by state statute. And it also gives property owners an opportunity to share their thoughts on the tax levy. And that's what we want, we want them to do. And then December 19th, that is when we will have a consideration of our final 2023 budget and tax levy. Our levy is due to Carver County by the end of December. So truth in taxation, some people in the finance world call it the TNT. Why is it required? Well, in 1988, it was enacted to enhance public participation in Minnesota's property tax system. It's encouraging transparency in the annual budgeting process in municipalities. And it's educating residents and business owners on how property taxes are determined. And we like it because it's allowing residents to provide feedback on the proposed budget and levy. So here's an example of the statement that everybody should have received in their mailboxes on November 21st or a couple of days thereafter. This will show you your valuation, which is set by the Carver County Assessor's Office. And then it breaks down your proposed property taxes into three separate sections. There's Carver County, the City of Carver, and then there's always the school district that you're in. So the City of Carver is only a portion of the total property tax that a resident in the City of Carver pays. Once you receive this notice, the deadline to dispute any of your values, your market values on that top section in step one has passed for this year. And that would be with the assessor's office. Home valuations. As many of you probably saw on your 2023 property tax notice or proposed, Carver County residents and City of Carver residents will see home valuation increases around 20% or more. But I want to do note that assessment increases do not directly correlate to higher property taxes all the time. Carver County has seen historic market value increases for 2022. For questions on your property tax statement, I have the contact information up there if anybody is interested. And the current county assessor's name is Ryan Johnson. I also have his information up there. I just want to point out that the City of Carver is one of few cities in Carver County that does not collect revenue from franchise fees. So you don't see a little tiny spot on any of your utility bills, MetroNet, Excel, Comcast, where the City of Carver is getting a kickback from that. We don't collect any revenue from that. So total market value changes. I have to admit, when I received this, I received this from Carver County. I have to admit, when I received this new construction value, that's the amount that's all the way to the right. I was amazed at $78 million of new construction added in the City of Carver in the last year. So a total value change is the 222 million. That is some amazing growth. That is 31% increase. Taxable market value, they're determined by a combination of actual sales during the period between October 2020 and September 2021, as well as assessed values calculated by the Carver County Assessor's Office. So as you can see, I had researched the Carver County cities and I put them in this spreadsheet so you can see the taxable market value pay and then as well as, how much did that city go up from last year? And the City of Carver was 34% as compared to Chanhassen, which is 17%. That's a more established city if you, if you want a comparison there. So now we're going to talk a little bit more budget specific. 2023 general fund revenue rundown. Local government aid or LGA is received from the state of Minnesota. So we get that annually. We budget that into our operating budget in the general fund. And that is budgeted to decrease by 25%. And that, the reason for that is our growth, the growth of the city. That number decreases as the city grows. So that should be about 121,000 for 2023. We are budgeting building permit revenue at about 700,000, which is a 7% increase from 2022. Obviously, staff will continue to monitor this number. I'm sure all of you have been watching the news. The market influences this number a lot, so. We are budgeting a special capital fund transfer of $100,000. We have a special capital fund and we like to kind of use some of that money to reduce the amount of taxes that are due from the residents. So that's what that special capital fund transfer is. And overall increase in general fund revenues of 12% from 2022. This is just a visual. So you can see that property taxes collected from residents make up 65% of that pie. Building permits is the next largest number. And then so on. General fund expense highlight. This does not include employee wages or benefits. I took some of our top important expenses for the next year and I threw them out here. Our police contract. We contract with Carver County Sheriff's Office. And our contract for next year is 262,000. We're also looking at capital outlay. What that means is we are going to be purchasing some accounting software, a mower and then a Kubota, I believe, or yes, a blower or something. I'm real technical with the tractors and such. I'll get back to you on that one. Yes. Chad probably knows better. Tractor. All right. So as you can see here, some of the, we're also purchasing a large amount of fire department protective gear in 2023. This is just comparing in kind of general categories, so public services, building inspections, administration, fire contracted services. The comparison and how did these expense categories change from 2022 to 2023? And you can see it by department. Public services is a big department. I mean, we're talking streets and trails and parks. And so when you see this 179,000, that is a lot of resources that our city needs to cover the City of Carver. This is just another visual so you can see, some people are really visual. You can see public services is using that almost a million dollars to keep up the city and then administration and so on. Capital improvement needs. So capital improvement is what, what do we need to purchase in order to operate successfully as a city? And how are we going to fund it? So the source of funds, I talked about the special capital fund earlier. And that will be funding a contribution to the Third Street Bridge construction as well as their certified levy project. We will beginning, we will be beginning to drop architectural and construction drawings for a public services and fire department building project next year. That, that project isn't planned to start until 2024 if approved. So we are just going to be starting some architectural and construction drawings. That will be an interfund loan to be repaid by project funding. And here's the ones that I was mentioning. It's a public services mower replacement and tractor. Perfect. All right, debt. So some of the money that residents pay in their property taxes goes to pay back some of the debt. And what is the debt for? It's for all sorts of previous projects that the city has done in order to improve the city. And so some of the descriptions on the left-hand side will sort of explain what we use the money for. JCP is Jonathan Carver Parkway, also known as 11. As you know, there were some big improvements there. And City Hall, this building, so on, so forth. Overall, the proposed debt that's due next year is 1.3 million. That's actually going down because you can see that we're having a bond fall off next year. So get to the good part. What, what are we doing here? What is the increase for next year? Here is the history of the levy increase. That is, what is, what's the levy going up? 6.9%. That will be our total levy increase for 2023, if approved on the 19th. General levy, there's three sections, the general levy, the debt service levy, which I just talked about. And then we also have a street maintenance levy. The street maintenance levy is something that the City of Carver started doing last year. And that's just so that we can be more transparent about the street projects that they're completing in the city. We're collecting money and we're spending money on the street, so let's show it. Let's show what we're doing with that money. But 6.9% and that increase over last year is just under $250,000. So what does that do to our tax rate? So remember the big million dollars, millions of dollars growth that I was talking about earlier? Well, that number plays a part along with that 6.9% levy increase. And it actually reduces the City of Carver's tax rate. So in 2022, the tax rate was 48%. So an average valued home of 410,000 paid $1,900 in the City of Carver tax. This year, a $410,000 home at the 37% is going to pay $1,500 in City of Carver tax. That's due to the growth and then that somewhat conservative increase of 6.9% in the levy. And I put the other cities on here too, just so that you can see kind of where the City of Carver falls in there. Every store, every city has its own story about their tax rate, but this is our story. Here's another visual to just to show where we were at last year with the 48%, how it's calculated. There's a homestead exclusion that the state of Minnesota uses to give property taxpayers kind of a break, but once you get over that 400,000, you really don't get a break. So that's pretty much everybody now because where can you find a home nowadays for that if you're moving into a new house? But, but you can see that the comparison between the same home last year, the average valued home went from 328,000 up to 410,000 with the market value increase. Yet the taxes on this house will decrease by $29. And this is just to lay out some more scenarios for you. I took six houses in the City of Carver. These are actual houses. I took their market values and what they paid in city taxes in 2022. I then took their proposed 2023 property tax statements and what they will be paying in 2023. And you can see the difference. Every category from one to six is decreasing. That doesn't usually happen. There's usually one, you know, with the calculations and everything, there's usually one or two homes that will go up just because of the market exclusion, but this is fantastic. So if we want to say, how do we represent ta, the City of Carver taxes represented on a monthly city service bill? So a monthly or an average valued home of 410,000 will pay an estimated $1,524 in City of Carver property taxes, which comes to $127 a month. So how does that break down? That breaks down to $33 in debt for street and facility improvements, $25 for parks maintenance, snow plowing, fleet maintenance, facility maintenance. That's basically getting your car on the roads, your feet on the trails, all of that. $14 for building inspections and planning. That's bringing new homes in here. And then also planning for new development and new, hopefully, commercial activity. And then $14 for communications, finance, and you can see how that goes. So that was me trying to make finance fun and truth in taxation. So I would absolutely take any questions or comments at this point in my presentation.
Right. So with that, this is the point where if anyone from the public has any comments, we would welcome you up. Just general ground rules are, we'd like for you to introduce yourself, say your name and your address, please. Reed, looks like you're ready, so come on up.
It's already on, right? Yep. My name is Reed Welch. I live at 1813 Red Oak Ridge. So I just had a couple of quick questions here, taking some notes. So were there any major changes since our October projections? Or any new expenses we had from the last meeting? Or based on the, you know, continuous feedback, you don't need to answer that right away. And then just another highlight that I think some of the other cities have millions of dollars in franchise fees where Carver has none, so that, that's good. I just happened to be at that city council meeting where we're discussing that. And then, could you just maybe give an example of some of the special fund stuff? I did see some, some other ones up there when we were going through the presentation, but just, just to maybe help people keep an idea of what, what the different funds are for. And then I also had another question on the number of new homes increasing from 2000, from last year to this year, and then how we kind of foresee that going forward, you know? The market's slowing down a little and just kind of what, what projections are built in? Are we assuming, I guess the question is, based on the current number of homes we have now is what our budget? So if we have any new homes that are built during the next year, that's just extra money that's in the budget that the city council can, right? Because presumably, the empty land is assessed at a different value. Once the home is built and moved in, you know, the price increases and they start paying property taxes. So there's going to be some nominal extra income, right? That, that maybe wasn't in the initial projections based on how many new homes are built? No? Okay. And then I just wondering, do we, did we have any bonding expenses this year? I didn't, I didn't see any. I don't remember. I didn't think we did. Okay. Just checking. And yeah, and then that, again, for me, people who aren't attending city council meetings all the time, but that street, that street fund is super, super helpful. It does all the road resurfacing and, and keeping your street nice. And the idea is to spread it out over a longer time so you don't get hit with a big assessment. So other than that, I'm happy to have my taxes go down and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thanks, Reed.
Well, if you can answer questions at the, at the end of the
At the end, okay.
Sure.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah. Anyone else with any questions or comments? All right. Hearing done. We will, let's see.
Reed, do you mind if I, a couple of those, there's some nuanced answers to your response. Do you mind if I, we follow up with you via email or call? Okay, thanks.
If we can get some public.
Sure.
All right. We'll see. Let's see. After all the public comments are received. Yep.
Welcome.
It's been a while since I've been here. Here's Robert Law, 505 Skyview Lane. I did a couple of questions on estimate market values. How do you run up $90,000 this year? And what you say show up there on what home taxes are, that has nothing to do, that's not with county or not, that is what the seeds are going to charge you?
Mayor, Council, can I?
Sure.
So I looked up your, so the, the city doesn't determine values, Skip. So whatever the value is placed, as, as Lynn was giving her presentation, I looked up, they raised your value by 33%. And so if you have, or others have questions about the value or how they calculate it, the best, your best course of action is go to the county assessor's office. So we just add our number and they do the multiplier with that. And so at that 33%, you're likely, I can see by your taxes that you, you had an impact that's kind of beyond average. So I, I would encourage you and I can get you a number if you, if you need one to call the assessor's office.
Well, then with the, on the bottom, excluding the special assessments, that's way up too, 14%. Is that with the city?
So the, what you're looking at, the, the total, so the 14%, that's the total of the county, the school district and the city along with like, there's a metropolitan council. So that's, that's the collective. So the, your tax, do you mind if I share that or?
Go ahead.
Your city tax went from 124919 to 132270. But the 14% is a representative of the change for the county and the school district, et cetera. So the average in Carver was around 22 to 23%. And that's where the, the example homes that Lynn showed were in that range. But if you're at 33% or higher, then you're going to start to see an increase. So, you know, I think the best course of action that you have, I mean, you can still make comments to the council on the overall budget, but the valuation isn't something that the council can, can weigh in on, unfortunately.
So in other words, it's, every year's been going up. Now you said this year you're going to, taxes, I said it went down some on your own.
Well, it depends on what your valuation is at. The county determines that valuation on an annual basis. And then whatever the city's taxes are, it's a mathematical equation is, is put in to determine what you owe. But the city's rate went from 48% to 30, 37%. So the multiplier that's used went down. So in most cases, not all cases, unfortunately, but in most cases, that will show a tax decrease. But if your valuation continues to go up, that's going to probably be an ongoing struggle.
So that's, that affects this quite a bit then.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
All right. Thanks for coming in, Skip.
You guys are doing a good job. Streets are getting a little better, some aren't.
We're working on it.
One street at a time, Skip, one street at a time.
And Skip, you're not.
Skyview, Mount Hope, I think it needs it too now.
It's on our list.
It's on our list.
For sure.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Skip. Appreciate it. Coming up, kid. Okay, let's see. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak, you're welcome. Okay, after all public comments are received, the public hearing will be closed and no further comments will be taken on this issue for the evening. Going once, going twice. All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a motion by Councilmember Henry?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Any additional comments or questions from the council? Brent, I don't know, did you want to address some of Reed's questions?
Sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. Uh, so when we can get into, the city has probably over 30 separate funds. So there's debt service funds, uh, enterprise funds, which aren't, uh, related to truth and taxation, but it will come up in the next with the fee schedule. But, you know, we have a fund for water, sanitary sewer, uh, stormwater. So each of those funds kind of operates like its own business. Uh, there's a park dedication fund, so, uh, when a development comes in, uh, they pay an amount based on our overall park plan. That money is then segregated and only used for parks projects. Uh, there's a fire department capital fund, so if there's any surplus or donations made to the fire department, it's kept in that fund. Um, there's a civil defense siren fund, so when a development comes in, some money's put towards the next, uh, emergency siren that we need. As it relates to, uh, budgeting for home construction, uh, so we'll, we'll do an estimate. But, uh, as you know, it's a, as most people know, that's kind of a floating target. I mean, um, and so, um, we have a set amount of costs to run our building inspection program. We are set up in a way where, uh, we don't want to make a profit off of that. It's, it's money in, uh, to pay for the cost to run the program. Unfortunately, there are going to be years, uh, where we don't hit that. So we're probably, um, a good hundred thousand dollars short in 2022. Uh, there are years where it will be over and so the hope is, is that the roller coaster eventually kind of, um, evens out that years that you're in deficit or the years that you can catch up in surplus. But we, we go actually through a pretty extensive study. We had brought somebody in to make sure that our debt, our operational costs, et cetera, are in line so that when that contractor is paying for that permit, uh, they can be rest assured that it's not to profit to the city to build a building or buy something not related to inspections. It's meant to fund, uh, the vehicles they drive, the gas they put in, the salaries, uh, the administration to process that inspections program. But very good questions. And if you ever just want to sit down and talk budget, Lynn would be happy to be with you.
She would be the person to completely take you up on that.
Yeah, just to quickly add, I think, another couple of things you asked. We, I think we had 183 new home builds last year. As compared to this year, we're at maybe 96 or 95. Changes since October, we got our health insurance rates. And then, uh, the fire department will be joining para. And so I had an income for state aid and also an expense that pays out the state aid into their pensions. Took those off. They just, you know, cancel each other out. It's an in and an out. Those were removed from the budget. That was a change. Um, and then like Brent said, the different funds, we also have capital improve, uh, project funds. So anytime we're working on a project, we keep the funds separate. We keep any, um, revenue and expenses separate so that we can track that project very precisely. So, super good questions.
Yeah, and the only other thing that I have to add to that is, um, you asked about franchise fees. A few years ago, I looked at the City of Chaska's franchise fees and they make more in franchise fees than the City of Carver's budget each year. So they were making $3 million a year in franchise fee revenue. And our budget was, well, our 2023 budget is roughly $3.4 million. So it's a lot of money they're bringing in. But on the backs of their residents, the next time you, you go to a friend's house in Chaska or Victoria, ask to see their cable bill and see that line item in there, so.
Every month.
Every month. Okay, let's see. So, council, any questions, comments, concerns on the 2023 budget?
No. No, and I wanted to say it again, the reason, at least that I myself don't have any questions is that we have gone over this and over this since September. So this isn't because we're not paying attention, this is because we've seen it 12 times or more.
Yeah, that's the disclaimer that I always give. It's not that we, um, didn't have feedback because we did in July and in August and in September and as recently as last two weeks ago when we last met and going through the draft. Um, all right, then with that, I don't think we need any further action. Right, okay. Okay, the 2023 fee schedule, which is also a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second. You have a motion by council member McK and a second by council member Sear. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, Ms. Shitty.
Thank you, mayor. So every year, the staff begins to look at our fees. And as Brent had mentioned earlier regarding the, the building inspection fees, uh, we try to determine if what we're charging for services is still what we need to be charging to support our operations here at the City of Carver. And so we began that process back in probably September. And we have come up with a proposed fee schedule for the city council to review. And we have redlined it and proposed the 2023 fee schedule. Just to highlight a couple of changes, in the rental fees, we have restructured that to try and be a little bit more user friendly. We have, uh, tiered down the groups from four to three. And we did talk about that at a meeting back in July. And we changed price changes for some of the conference rooms here at city hall. And then we also increased the cost for the building host. And that's if you're having, uh, an event here with alcohol, we have to hire somebody to be the host. Um, utility rates are obviously, those are something that change on an annual basis. Water, sewer and storm water rate increases are changing based on what is projected in our long-term plan. And water meter rate increases, as you know, um, everything has gone up. And so these water meter costs have almost doubled. And so we changed those based on the, our vendor supply. And then bulk water charge fee to align with the industry standard to make sure that we're recouping our money for bulk water. And that's for if a contractor's in town and they need to fill up their tanks with water for a project that they're working on. License and permit fees, the only thing there is we decreased the cost of an on-sale wine license, which usually includes, includes strong beer. And so with that, what we're looking for tonight is a motion to adopt an ordinance, which would be amending certain fees charged by the city, as well as a resolution which would authorize the city a summary publication into the paper. And I'll take any questions.
All right, um, are there any public comments on the fee schedule? Reed, come on up.
Reed Welch, 1813 Red Oak Ridge. So I just had a, a question on the water fee. I am, the new water treatment plant, how was that? That is, I, I know we had been paying in previously on the capital funds. Do you have like a rough percentage of that cost of the increase for the, the current year or the, the, the next year projection? Just, you know, it's a big expense. We have to have it so we can support the growth. So I'm, I'm all for it. I'm just, just curious of what, you know, of the fee increase, you know, 10% or 20% was for the new treatment plant or just, you know, rough numbers, something like that, just that, or?
I-
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
I don't know if we have it broken down to that much detail, but in our long-term financial plan, those figures are in there with the debt. And so that's how we came up with the-
Then you back calculate based on the bond payments.
Yeah, and so that's how we came up with the 3%, 3% and 5% for water, sewer, storm respectively. Brent?
So just one more thing that, that might help you and others, uh, think about this. So the, the water treatment plant has, um, been in the long-term financial plan for, I'd say, in excess of 10 years. And so I would offer that, you know, it's not like buying a car where your payment starts when you get the car. The community has been paying for the water treatment plant for the last 10 years through the rate structure. And so, um, you know, a lot of the rates are paid through, or a lot of the cost of the water treatment plant comes out through the connection fees that new development pays. And that's largely based on the need for, that new capacity is based on new growth. By a percentage, the rate users, uh, pay for less of that because they've already paid. In the end, if we don't have enough growth, then, you know, the rates have, need to be adjusted. But there, there isn't like a moment in time, you know, i.e. this year where you start paying for the water treatment plant. So there isn't a, a way, readily available way for us to tell you that the percentage is X amount of this year's increase.
Okay, that makes sense. I, again, just gen- general question for knowledge. More, more knowledgeable than probably the average, uh, average than it, but yes, no, thank you very much and thanks.
Thanks, Reed.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other public comments? All right, after all public comments are received, the public hearing will be closed. No further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Um, so last chance for public comments, going once, going twice. All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, all right, any additional comments or questions from council?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 12-2022, amending certain fees charged by the city.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member McK. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'll make a-
Motion passes. Go.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 155-22, authorizing summary publication of ordinances 12-2022.
All right, we've got a motion by council member Sear.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McK. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, let's see. So first you wanted to pull item 7.6 from the consent agenda. Let's see, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda saved for item number 7.6?
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion by council member McK.
Sure.
Oh, that was a close one. I'm going to give it to Glenn. Uh, motion by council member McK, second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, Christie.
Great. Um, so when we're looking at 7.6, we're amending the employee handbook. And this is related to the dress, I guess, dress, gordon, appearance. And we have a lot here that's crossed out. So I'm just curious, uh, what we are going to do, let's say, um, pajamas are probably not work-appropriate attire. Midriff bearing shirts are probably not appropriate attire. Those are all crossed out. So I, I like the dress for your day policy, but what is our action if we have issues with how people are coming to work? And that could be even if they're out, let's say, in the field and they are wearing shorts and they shouldn't be wearing shorts.
I believe that there are other, mayor and council, I believe there are other avenues if someone's wearing something that, um, is detrimental to like the safety of themselves or others. I, I just think it's a, you know, I appreciate the question. I think it's a very good one, something that we discussed at length with the department heads and, and team. The, the argument that I would offer or the statement I would make in responses, we've never had anyone wear pajamas to work. And so it just feels a little parental to like, give a group of what we think are first-class professionals a list of, don't wear pajamas. I mean, there's a, you know, the thing that became kind of comical is we have a provision in there that says, don't wear juicy on the back of your sweatpants. Well, you know, it just, you know, the, it seemed really antiquated. I think if there is, if there's someone that's coming in here with inappropriate attire, I think we can do that within the bu- within the kind of confines of like dress for your day. I would argue that if someone was wearing, you know, um, undergarments to work, that I would say that's not a dress for your day, um, piece. You know, unless they were, unless we somehow ended up getting like, uh, a pool and we had life.
Worried where you're going with that. Yeah, I know, I was waiting. I was like, wait, what? Yep, totally oncoming.
But, uh, it did, it just, you know, kind of, this is an offshoot of the employee survey. It just, we're trying to rid ourselves of some parental rules that are really never enforced. But maybe, you know, confined folks as an example, um, you know, there are, uh, it's prohibited under the current handbook to wear a sleeveless shirt. And at one point, uh, we had some folks wearing tank tops mowing lawns, which is a kind of a safety issue. But, you know, you can be professional in an office setting and wear a sleeveless shirt. And in a way, just it seemed, again, overly parental for, uh, me or another supervisor to dictate that level of dress. But I think the boundary is a little bit more distinct these days.
Okay, thank you. I just need a little more explanation on that. I can make a motion to approve item 7.6 from the consent agenda.
Got a motion by council member McK.
Second.
And a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, onto the business items. Item 8.1, the liquor license application for 205 Broadway. Mr. Anderson.
Um, Mr. Anderson, would you like us to recuse at this point?
Yes, so I, I think we can, mayor and council, um, council members McK and Henry are both going to recuse themselves. I don't think anything needs to be stated, but just due to conflicts of interest, um, they can certainly remain at the dais. And then if during the moment when you want to take public comment, if folks are here to talk, they can, um, of course, address the council as resident McK and resident Henry, if they want to. Not to put pressure on them, but I just want to make sure that they're not, and everybody knows that they're not acting in their official capacity as council member as it relates to this item, so.
Mayor Johnson, my intention is to recuse myself and then rejoin as a resident.
Okay.
Okay.
Ditto that.
Okay, thank you, resident McK. Resident Henry, okay, thank you.
So, uh, mayor and council, um, first of all, is the applicant, is it Karen Marish? Before I start mispronouncing her name, can you clarify how I-
Marish.
Marish, okay. So Ms. Marish has submitted paperwork for a liquor license application for 205 Broadway. That's Lisa's place just down the street. She submitted, uh, paperwork that was able to get the background check, which is required under state law underway. That was conducted by the sheriff's office. It did, uh, reveal that she has five alcohol-related convictions on her record. And the dates and details of those convictions are all in, in the council materials. None of the convictions, uh, including the two felonies, are disqualifiers automatically just because under state law and the city code, um, in order for a felony conviction to be a per se or automatic disqualifier, it has to be within the last five years. The most recent one was in 2014. However, under state law, um, cities still have the ability to deny liquor licenses for a lack of good moral character and reputation. Um, and therefore, the city should still consider that criminal history as part of, of issuing the application. The general rule with liquor license applications is that cities have very wide discretion on approval or denial. But in this case, uh, given the fact that criminal history would really be the only basis or justification for a denial, the city has to follow, uh, chapter 364 of state statute, which is a criminal rehabilitation law. That law is generally summarized in my staff report. And so, um, I'll go through just quickly, uh, the steps that the council should take as it relates to going through those, uh, through that statute. And first, it should be determined whether the convictions, uh, directly relate to the license based on the, the statutory factors that I listed in, in the memo. That, to me, seems like a fairly uncomplicated analysis, given the fact that they're all alcohol-related and that the application, uh, from Ms. Marish is, is for a liquor license. And if it is determined by the council that the convictions directly relate to the license, the council should next determine whether the applicant has provided sufficient evidence of rehabilitation to warrant the issuance of a liquor license to her. Uh, there are a number of things you can consider. She has submitted a lot of, uh, details, uh, about her convictions, about her past. She submitted, um, some information about her discharge from probation, which was successful. And when that occurred, the fact that it occurred early. And she submitted not only a narrative from, uh, from herself, but also a number of letters of, of recommendation and reference from members of the community, many of which, or some of which may even be here tonight and may want to say some, some things to the council as well. So if, after you go through those two steps, you determine that the record does establish sufficient rehabilitation as it relates to the liquor license, um, then the council, under that rehabilitation statute, should approve the license. And if you, uh, believe that the record does not support rehabilitation and, uh, as part of that, determine that- as part of that, determine that, uh, there's a lack of, of moral character and reputation, then you do have the discretion to deny. And, uh, following the discussion tonight by the council and, and any, uh, testimony or, or dialogue with folks in the audience, I would just ask that, regardless of the decision, you either approve option A or option B verbatim from the staff report. That will give, uh, staff an opportunity to bring back a resolution at a future meeting. It's, it's always really difficult for staff to, um, try to forecast how these decisions and, and where the direction of the council's, um, decision will go. And so, rather than doing everything in one evening, we'd ask that you have the conversations, make your, your findings and, and preliminary determination. We would bring back a written resolution that would, uh, complete the record at the next meeting. Uh, we've already talked about the council members that are recusing themselves, and so with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Mayor Johnson, but, you know, I'm here to, I'll chime in if I think I need to, or if I think there's any boxes that we need to check legally. Otherwise, I can answer any questions that the council may have as well.
Okay, thank you, Dave, and as always, we, uh, gonna ask that you help kinda referee, if you will, from a legal perspective tonight. Okay, um, Ms. Marish, you wanna come up? If you weren't planning on it, that's fine too, but we, I think we'd love to hear from you. Um, sorry, this is hard and heavy and is
Yeah.
not my favorite thing. As you saw earlier, we like to have fun, um, and this is not necessarily in that category. But, um, we reached out to you after the application, um, and you, um, gave us the information that we requested. I'm just, um, wondering if you can kind of share and, and summarize in your own words, um, the convictions that, I guess I'm, because especially that we're looking at this rehabilitation clause, I think for me, the part of it that I'm interested in is the changes that you've made. So if that's something that you're comfortable sharing, I'd love to hear that.
Sure. I was, in twenty fourteen, I was running Floyd's Bar in Victoria. And I was going through a breakup with my youngest two kids' dad. And, um, that was hard and got carried away at work many times, um, with other employees and customers. And it was just a hard time and, um, when I didn't have my kids, when they were in their father's care, that was when I, I carried on. Even though I had past convictions, you know, um, to me, it seemed common, you know? I, I bartended and served people at the bar and we all have been guilty of drinking and driving. I, looking back, I am grateful that it happened and I'm grateful for the hard probation that I did go through. I've gone through treatment, um, you know, when I first got the first couple, it was just trying to get out of court and get back home and get, you know, back to work. But this last time was really hard. While I was on probation, um, I was on electronic home monitoring where I had to be home right after work, right? I had time to pick up the kids. I was on my way home and it was the first icy, sleeting rain, like inch of ice on the road. And I always opted to take the backroads from Victoria, just 'cause there was less traffic and I figured, you know, less drivers on the road was, I don't know, I felt safer doing that. And it had marked, uh, thirteen years from my friend that had passed away that I spoke about in my, um, letter. It had been thirteen years since he passed away and his girlfriend had called me and reminded me of that. And it was just crazy to think that it had been that long. Uh, so that was just kind of in the back of my mind. And when I was on my way home, there was a, uh, Bronco that was passing people on this horrible stretch of road. And, um, it was just two cars in front of me and I saw the headlights go up into the sky and then back down and the first two cars didn't stop and I stopped and, uh, I got out of my car to try to see if I could help or, you know, do whatever and I, I didn't know the roads that I, I knew how, where I was, but I just didn't know the roads and I called the cops and, so I got home after picking up the kids, I, you know, I had to file a police report with, um, I saw a lifeless body, the guy had passed away. And so I got home late on house arrest and they violated my probation. I served four months in jail over the holidays, missed a lot of time with the kids, a lot of precious times that I always looked forward to. And I just, I, 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 it's not me anymore. I've gone through treatment a couple times, like I said. This time, it kinda poked on more, um, growing up stuff and different depression and stuff that was going on in my family that I didn't have any idea about it was, you know, I have to increase my meds because you're getting in trouble and I can't handle it, you know? It's like, uh, my counselor said that I'm not in charge of anybody else's happiness. And when he said that, it was just, it all made sense. And I don't hold that against my family or anybody. I'm just grateful that I know it now because I can make the right decisions on how to handle that stuff. I have been in the food and beverage my whole working life. I started at McDonald's when I was fifteen, um, and I was so ticked because I couldn't be back in the grill, I had to work the drive-through. Because you had to be sixteen to work the grill and so I couldn't wait to turn sixteen and be back there and just, just to be busy. And then I was at Byerly's in Chanhassen and started out as a server there and, um, just wanted to get back in the kitchen and create and just have that fast pace and the hard work and, you know? And then after Byerly's, I was at Emma Crumbie's in, in Belle Plaine and that's where I live. I started out as a cook there and then moved to day manager and then general manager and I was running that place. And then from there, Lois from Floyd's had called me and said that they wanted to expand their kitchen and expand their menu, and so that's what I was hired to do. And, um, that was my first experience working in a bar. And I thought, what the heck did I get myself into? I came to these comfortable little family restaurants and all the workers were sober, most, I mean, other than the line cooks were probably still a little jacked up from the night before, but, it was unreal. But fun, it was a lot of fun and it was fun to be a part of, um, building the kitchen and deciding what should go where and how we were gonna do the menu and what we were gonna put on there and, um, Lois was absolutely out of her mind with some of the stuff that she wanted to do, but she always said she was gonna get a bobblehead of me so that she could just tap my head and I would just say, yeah. Not say like, no, let's take a step back and think about this first. But yeah, that, uh, exposed me to a lot of different things. Most of them, I shouldn't say most of them, a lot of them weren't healthy. But I, I realized what my passion was too and then I had, um, I was in the kitchen, she moved me, my personality took me to the front of the house. So I was bartending, um, and then pretty much running the place when they were on vacation. Like I did the accounting and the bookkeeping and stuff like that, so, um, I learned a lot and I, I feel like I went through everything in my life to get me to hopefully a point that I'm at now. Prior to talking to Lisa, I worked on purchasing the Whiskey River in St. Peter. That had been closed for a number of years, there was a lot of renovation that needed to be done there. But I didn't have the means of funding that I do now, so I would have to, um, apply for an SBA loan and that required you to not be on probation, in which I was at that current time. I also worked on trying to turn a furniture store in Belle Plaine into a restaurant. There is asbestos tiles and, so there is a lot of mitigation and stuff to even break ground. Talked to Cindy's Kitchen, that's another little diner in Belle Plaine. But going through it, like to me, I, I see it as being, um, free education from what I've learned on the licensing and, you know, we went over the liquor license stuff with, um, doing the St. Peter thing too and I had to submit fingerprints and, you know, it's just, it's just hard and it's hard that it's all, like all these feelings and everything have been stuff for so many years, so.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
I know, I, don't apologize.
Not my favorite.
This is not how I wanted to meet you.
Same, um, do you guys have any questions?
I know, I really don't have any questions. I, I do wanna express, you've taken this process so seriously. I am so impressed you have six references. And clearly you have a lot of people that are surrounding you, um, that are supporting you.
Thank you.
And it certainly seems like you have such passion for this type of business, this type of role. I just, you know, we, we do annual licensing for a reason, right? So that we can review in case there's anything that comes up, not that I'm saying that there would be, but, you know, just, just in, as an in case, right? Because that's our licensing policy. It just seems like you have such passion and there's just really nothing here that makes me think that you should be disqualifying from getting your liquor license.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's nice to meet you. Just your, your letter, I would imagine, applied very therapeutic. And it just was so genuine. And for me, you know, I first kinda had a look at the facts of the things and, you know, and then what is the, what's gonna be asked of the council to decide on. And for me, because those alcohol-related convictions occurred beyond five years ago, um, I mean, next month it'll be nine years. I do support you having a liquor license. What I, and then the other thing I was supposed to look at, which is a fact, which is really hard to like grasp, is are you a good moral character and a good reputation?
Well, that, I mean, that was going back to my application, I misunderstood the question and, you know, after I, after I answered that question and I left the meeting with Vicki, I'm like, that, this was too easy, there's no way that they're gonna do a background check and, you know, I, I assumed that.
And that actually wasn't what I was alluding to.
Oh.
No.
Oh, I thought that's a.
More that like part of the state statute is, as council, we base our decision on, do we see you as a person of good moral character? And good reputation, which is like reputation.
Sure.
And that was really helpful to have your heartfelt letter and those letters of references that you must have gotten a very fast turnaround. So you definitely, like
Yeah.
Council member McKnight said, have a lot of support.
Thank you.
But like, how do you measure someone's character? And I just can tell that people respect you, but to me, what is so much more and more important and even now of meeting you today, is that you respect yourself.
Thank you.
And I just think that is huge.
It is.
That's where I stand with learning about her and, and what she's asking for.
Thanks, sorry.
Thank you, guys. I just have one more question, um, that I wrote down here so I didn't forget it, but I'm just wondering if you can, and I'm sorry for the invasive question, but I'm wondering if you can please, um, describe your current relationship with alcohol? And if you're still drinking, if there are any, how you kind of handle the decision-making process
Sure.
in those instances.
I have bartended ever since I got in trouble. So I've been on probation, I've been surrounded by alcohol constantly at work, all the time, right? I do occasionally drink. At home, when twenty twenty hit, it was my time to come up with different cocktails and different ideas and so I experimented with friends a lot. You know, but it's not anything like it was in the past, getting out of hand. I can't, it doesn't feel good, you know? It doesn't feel good in my heart to know that something could happen at any time, you know? So those chances just aren't, aren't for me anymore.
Okay, thank you, and again, I apologize for the invasive question. Let's see. I think the next step would probably be, I, it seems like we have a majority here. We need to go through the process, but it seems like a lot of folks took a lot of time on a Monday night to speak on your behalf. So I'm happy to hear from you guys because you're here. Is there anyone who would like to speak on Karen's behalf? Otherwise, I have a inclination, because we've already shared, that, um, we won't need to hear from you guys. However, I'm always open and willing to hear from you and again, you guys are here and quite honestly, um, this is one of our larger attended council meetings this year, so. Welcome, we're glad to hear you, uh, glad to see you, hope you enjoy Truth and Taxation, but if you guys would like to speak on behalf, I wanna give you guys the opportunity.
I'll speak.
Okay, excellent. Right, exactly. So, um, same rules as before, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Okay. I am Mindy Meyer-Bachdel and I currently live in downtown Carver here. I actually moved here from Belle Plaine a couple of years ago, but I've, uh, known Karen a long time and I seen her, go through all of her processes, especially this last time around. It was really hard from her, as a friend standpoint, just watching her not be home for the holidays, not be home for Christmas or Thanksgiving and I was trying to help out any way I can. Like you said, Lori, you're having a hard time trying to, how do you judge someone's, like, good character? Well, here, she, this is how you can judge a good character here. My dad passed away unexpectedly in June. Um, it was very hard, probably the hardest times I'm still going through right now, we have the holidays coming up and everything like that. Karen just was there so much for my family, she just, she's like, I don't know what to do, Mindy, and I'm like, I don't know what you can do either, you're just here. But she ended up cooking all of her meals for all of her families for about a week. And that was just, that's just what she just does, she's just really good at, um, oh, first off, she really likes the food and restaurant business and that's what brings us all here, but she just did it without, um, even like a second, she cleared her schedule, we were actually supposed to go on a girl's, uh, we call it girl's weekday. Cause, uh, I was supposed to go to a friend's cabin for a couple of days and just have, uh, some fun in the sun by a lake up north and I couldn't go and she had the choice to go and she decided to stay to be there for my mom and my sister and I through this really tough time and it was kinda nice that, um, you know, I never really wanna ever have to repay, you know, have like debts paid back or anything like that, but it was just, I don't know how I could ever repay her for doing what she did and she just cleared her schedule and was there for all of us. And I'd do the same if that ever happened with her, so. I think she'd be a really good asset to be a business owner here in town, um, just look at all the people that brought here just for a meeting, can you imagine if she had a business here in town? So, anyways, thank you for your time.
That'd be fun, right?
Right, but thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry for your loss, I appreciate your sharing. Anyone else? Welcome.
My name is, um, Kendra Hillk and I live in Belle Plaine. I actually met Karen back in two thousand and three at Emma Crumbie's, um, in Belle Plaine. And she's grown to be my big sister, let's say big sister. But, um, you know, she has just been a person that, through her troubles and through her hard times, has still proven to be a leader and somebody that everybody wants to be around. She helped me grow, um, as I was a manager by the time I had left Emma Crumbie's, um, and I, you know, when she went to Floyd's. I've watched her raise, her oldest son was four when I met her, he is now twenty-two, I think. And I've watched her raise him and her other two kids, I've watched her meet her husband and, um, help raise his son and just become the person she is today. We went through all the hard times together back in two thousand and fourteen, but, and I think it's important to know too, um, you mentioned the five convictions. The other four were when she was in her early twenties. And we all are young and dumb and make mistakes, so, um, I think she has grown so much just in the last nine years. But even when, um, I knew her from two thousand and three until two thousand and fourteen, the amount of growth that she's had personally and professionally was, is crazy. And like Mindy has said and all of the letters state, I'm sure, she is just a genuine person. You guys see that. She means what she says, her actions, her words, I'm sorry, her actions back up her words. And really, I think any community would be lucky to have her. She has, you know, creative following, we've all probably met her in the restaurant business somewhere. And I know some people here are people that she worked with at Floyd's, that she's helped build their businesses and their careers, so I just think she would be a very good asset to the community, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will. As long as I'm standing out in the crowd, I might as well have something to say.
Yes, resident Mock.
Yes, my name is Kristi Mock, I live at 112 Third Street East, so Karen is making me cry at a council meeting, thanks lady. But she is a light in this world. She is someone who I have cherished as a friend, I have known her for. Karen, look at what is happening. I have known her for. Yeah, I'm going to need the box, just throw it out here. I have known her for probably 15 or 16 years, along with Kendra here also, so we've played ball together back in the day. And again, when I say she's a light, she is just a beautiful person in this world and all the things people are saying about what she cares about is real. She's made some serious mistakes and she realizes it and has really come so far. And to know that she has become the person she is now is really special to me, obviously, because I'm bawling like a baby. But when I was reading through these letters, and I think that it's fair to say that the council, from the way that you've commented and the things that you've seen, has noticed this, but her parents, when they're such, please consider her now and not back then, I thought that was really wonderful because I think we don't need to get pigeonholed into who we once were. I think we all have a chance to be something more and something better and I think Karen has proved that. And I will give a shout out that she's also been volunteering with the Lions Club for the last year. She's not a Lion yet, we're going to get you, but she has been volunteering her time in this community already, just to help out and that is in her nature and it always has been, so I would, I again, ask council to please see her as a great asset to this community and I would look forward to working with her in the capacity that we all, that we all know, so. Thank you, Karen, for coming here and sharing this with us. I know it's not easy and it's something that gets our hearts, especially when we've known you for so long, so thank you.
Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you.
Sorry, Kristi, but I didn't go ahead of you.
I know, right? How do I follow that? My name is Jeremy Ron, I live in Arlington, Minnesota. I've known Karen for a number of years, she's the one who actually chained me in, in the kitchen and when we worked at Floyd's together, but, I don't know, I feel like she would be a huge asset to this community, this town. It's not only that she cares about people, she cares about like the patrons of this town. I've seen her work in different places, it's always been her dream in order to do this, like actually do this and have the reins to it. She is one of the most hardworking, organized people I know, like, I don't even know how to go into detail. It's a lot scarier when you're up here.
I know.
But, you know, she, like, you know, like she said, she, she, she talks the talk, but she walks the walk as well, you know? And I feel like, you know, she would benefit this town greatly. You know, like Harvey's has been there forever, right? My great-grandpa was Harvey. And I feel like her establishment would be that Harvey's, you know, would be that staple in town people will come to see. And, you know, I, yeah, sorry, I'm kind of flabbergasted, but that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming on, I know it's.
It's scary.
Yeah, I know. We try not to make it face, appreciate you doing that. All right, anybody else? Just going once, going twice. Okay, thank you guys all for coming here tonight. Procedurally, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, we do need to run through this process, correct? As you laid out in the memo.
All I do, all we need to do is to make a motion based upon the options you've laid out, correct?
Yes, you know, I've been listening to and it seems like, from what I'm hearing, the council is planning to go with option A.
Correct.
Which is fine. I don't think we need any more discussion from the council unless you want to have more or discuss any of the, you know, from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this is going to help form firmly the resolution. The council satisfied with the evidence of rehabilitation and is, that's really part and parcel, that is what good moral, moral character reputation boils down to when it comes to the liquor statute. Different legal standards, but if you look at it and the requirements in that other chapter, it's, it's the same thing. So feel free to discuss as much or as little more as you'd like. Ultimately, I'm, I'm just looking for that, that option A motion at this point, I don't think we need any more, I have what I need.
Okay, so we're good, we don't have to go through the step one, step two is outlined either.
I'd be, yes, if, if we were going down a different path, I'd want to walk through some of the legal elements of that first step more, but as long as you're satisfied with the rehabilitation, you don't have an option, you have to approve it, which is fine, and that will satisfy the legal standards, so we can, in your direction, go right to that or take your time and discuss more.
Okay, sorry, guys, this is how the sausage is made. Okay, you guys both provided comments, I just asked questions. So Karen, I just wanted to take time, you know, kind of echoing exactly what Lori said, this clause of determining if a person is not of good moral character and repute, like, who am I, right? To determine, I don't know you again, like I wish that this wouldn't be the way that we're getting to know each other. So that's awkward and bad. If I wanted to be a judge, I would have gone to law school and that was never in my interests. I also, and I think it was Joy who said, I'm impressed by the, the letters that you put together in short order during a holiday week. As someone who's worked to get letters recently, like it's hard to do, so I appreciate that. And Kristi, I think you nailed, you used a word that I, I'm sure is in these letters, but I kind of felt about like having a light about you. So I will also be voting in favor of this and I hope that this all goes well for you and I'm excited for it, I wish you all the best. So with that, I will make a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the liquor license application submitted by Karen Marish. Say that right? Oh, don't cry. On condition that the current licensee of the establishment provides written confirmation to the city that she desires that the license be transferred and any additional requirements for processing the application are met.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Sayer.
Can I just jump in real quick too? So just to remind the applicant, and Vicky knows this, there, there's a, some more paperwork that needs to be filled out that the city needs before the council can officially approve it at the next meeting, so just please work with staff between now and then to fill all that out and, you know, the paperwork that was filled out to date got you through the background check in this process, but there's a little bit more to be done, so I just didn't want that to go overlooked since we're all in the room.
He's the lawyer, that's his job.
Can we drop your diagram?
He will, he's real good. Okay, let's see, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Joy looks perturbed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right. All right, so up next on the agenda is, I'd, sorry here, 9.1, the summary of the city manager's performance review. So before this meeting, we had a closed session where we did Brent's annual performance review and he did amazingly well, like he always has. The areas that we discussed were city council relationships, like how well he keeps us in the know, staff leadership and management, community relations, communication and organizational operations, financial management, project management and intangibles, those other duties as assigned. The few notes that I, I took, it was a quote from Joy saying that Brent has impressive levels of patience and diligence and she just hit the nail on the head so well, because in addition to being a better person than I'll ever be, there's so much that you do that I could never do. So another individual, and I think it was you Glenn, who talked about Brent's sixth and seventh sense in kind of knowing what we needed and what, anticipating what would come next and processes and that kind of thing. Brent has done a lot of work in the last year with hiring for the finance director's position, strengthening communications, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong document here, doing interviews and doing a, a survey with staff, so he got basically a glowing review, so congratulations.
Yes.
All right, Merrick, any updates?
This one brief one, we got confirm, excuse me, confirmation from the sheriff's office that Deputy Joey Chaffin is going to be our daytime deputy. We are going to be saying goodbye to Ross and welcoming the new evening deputy, Deputy Stephen Fisher in 2023, so we'll bring him out to a council meeting when he's available and introduce him to the council and our team.
Thank you. Council updates, start with you Glenn. Sorry.
You threw me.
I know, sorry.
I just want to reiterate to Brent, how much it's been a pleasure working with you. You're, you are an asset to this city, you run the city and you, the city is in good hands with Brent running it.
Brent hasn't gotten this much applause.
Let the hug fest.
They do.
Erica should watch the end of this movie, right?
There we go.
Yeah, again, thank you Brent for all of your work and service with the city, we appreciate that. The HPC, our meeting is canceled, so we do not have that. We did have the Santa, the Day of Santa with the Lions last Saturday, thank you. But anyway, so it went well, the, I want to say thank you to the fire department for coming out and helping out too, because they also really help out with the Lions Club at anything that we ask, so we really appreciate them. I think that is all I have for now.
I don't have any updates, but just a, another like thank you and appreciate Vicky and Kathy's years of service.
Joy?
I don't have any updates, thank you Brent, you're amazing. And I also, I also want to shout out thanks to Dave Anderson, your memo today was extremely helpful for us navigating the state statutes and the requirements, right? So we can grant this wonderful woman a license in our community, so thank you very much. It was really helpful to just understand what we needed to do, how we needed to be able to make this decision, so thank you.
I will echo your thanks to Dave, thank you, that made the legalese easy. And to Brent, congratulations on another great review, we're so thrilled that you choose to continue to work with us in the city of Carver. As far as my updates, let's see, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we had the Carver tree lighting, that's something that's run by the group Carver on the Minnesota, who always does a really great job. Honestly, it's the best kept secret in the city of Carver, because I think there were no more than three dozen people there, but it's always just such a good time. I think it was like 47 degrees that day, so it was great. We had a visit with the League of Minnesota Cities, once a year or so, they generally come out with some of their staff and then the league president when they're doing statewide tours. And that is kind of the professional organization that cities belong to. But they met us last week out in Waconia and Brent and Eric and I went out to meet with them and we had a good chat. They want to know what's going on in our communities, what they can help with and what they can do more or less of. Last Friday, I had a Carver County mayor's breakfast and as you know, that's all 50% you know, best practices and what would you do and is this coming up in your community? And then the other 50%, I casually and only half jokingly say is a support group. And then the Carver Village Christmas was last Saturday and it's just another great fun event that the Carver Lions bring on. You guys will all be thrilled to know that Santa told me I am getting cold this Christmas, so he was a spicy one, that Santa. So with that, can I add one?
I have one more thing, I forgot. So, another thing for the Lions, so the Soggy Bottom Golf fundraiser is coming up in January, so it's January 28th. We are right now taking nominations for those who may be in need. So this is a medical fundraiser for people who are suffering from medical, suffering during medical crisis. The parameters are on our website, you can find it on Facebook too to get to it. If there's somebody that you would like to nominate, we ask that you do it sooner than later, because we do have to get our planning underway and that's how we raise the money, is because we have to get the word out and enough time to get this done. So again, there's some parameters on there about Carver and your affiliations with Carver, we like to keep it close to home if possible, that doesn't mean you can't nominate somebody else if they're not directly related with Carver, but people who are either residents or related or affiliated with Carver will come in at a higher standing. But we encourage anyone to go ahead and nominate and it's on our website, so thank you.
I really threw you guys going first.
I did.
Sorry.
Karen, once you dot all your i's, cross all your t's and go through all the proper processes and paperwork, I want to welcome you to Carver. That's what I got.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry and Councilmember Mock, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, good evening, everyone.